Call the meeting to order. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Mayor Krasinski, I am here. Moko.
Present.
Groko is absent. Kufal?
Present.
Padilla is also absent. And Eker?
Here.
Now we'll take a moment to consider the agenda for tonight, February 7th, 2024. The only addition I have is when we get to Fire Department under 9F1. Chief, the chief would like to just talk to us for a few minutes and introduce our, the new assistant chief to us.
I put a handout on your desk. It's just, it's check register, the APs for this month. The one that was in the packet didn't have the check numbers on it, so this, that's all the, all of them are the same, it's just got the check numbers on it now.
Thank you for that. Any other changes for the agenda tonight? Then will, I need a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Eker, seconded by Moko. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Comments, updates, concerns? Do we have any citizens here that would like to speak tonight? Okay. You can come up to the podium, provide your name and your address for our record purpose.
My name is Tammy Linkert, and I live on 313 Fourth Street in Gaylord here.
Okay.
I'm here tonight because I received a emergency, or not an emergency, but a, a text notification on my, my phone the last time you had snow plowing. And it was for the alert program that I specifically did not opt into. And so I called on and talked to Steve Haglett a bit about it, but he was really not too sure about the, the whole thing. So I talked to Jolene a little bit. She kind of explained to me that it's, you know, software program done in-house. And that there was a meeting, which Steve also let me know, last October where you made those changes. And made it mandatory for everybody. And so I went and watched that meeting, and I didn't see at any time where you discussed adding people who had not opted into the program onto that program. You did discuss adding a feature to the program regarding water leaks as a way to communicate with residents and property owners. Jolene said that she had inputted all of those extra names and phone numbers, but didn't verify the phone numbers to that list directed by Ty. And according to Steve, Ty was directed by the city council. But again, I watched that meeting, and there was no discussion about changing the opt-in or opt-out or mandatory, whatever, whatever your procedure wants to be. There was no change in that. And so there were a bunch of names added to that and phone numbers that weren't verified. So people like me and maybe other random folks got text messages that they had specifically not asked for, or maybe just got a different phone number from somebody who did. And so I would like the city council to decide if you're going to have it opt-in, opt-out, whether or not it was warranted to put people who had not opted in that program on a text list to get text messages. Or how that's going to work. I, it doesn't really, you know, that's my, my information, and I gave that to you from my utility companies. I didn't expect just to have it, my, my not participating ignored and put on that list anyway. I was also surprised to learn that they don't have a really good protocol for finding leaks and notifying property owners. And I would like the city council to, to recommend having those protocols developed and implemented. No different than my natural gas or my electric utility companies. They call me when they see a significant change in usage. Sometimes it's a valid problem, and, and I've been contacted by both my natural gas and electric companies for those reasons. One time it was valid, the other time it was expected. And so Steve let me know that I could be removed from that list, but that I also wouldn't receive notifications about any water leaks on my property. And that's concerning to me as a property owner.
Okay. Well, thank you for your information, and we'll have to do some digging into our program, what our capabilities and limitations are.
Do you, are you, is it going to be, continue to be an opt-in only program? Is it opt-out? Like, right now, I'm concerned that I'm not going to get any notification if I have a water leak on my property.
Honestly, I don't know enough about the, the features of the software.
There, there is a system in place to notify, but the problem is it might be up to a month, is, you know, prior to-
Yeah, I talked to Jolene. She said that she writes out those blue slips, maybe five or less per month.
Right. It's not that, it's not that the city doesn't have a, a, a protocol in place for this.
That's what Ty said at the meeting that I'm referencing in October. He said that there wasn't really one in place.
Well, and to clarify, the former protocol was to hang a little notice on the door, but what happens is you get inclement weather, that notice might get blown away, wet and soggy, you know, so that wasn't maybe the best method, so that's why we decided to do it with this program. I guess if someone wants to opt out of that program, we have to have further discussions about how to notify the property owner when there is a discrepancy.
Right. And, and you did talk about adding that feature to that public alert system, but you didn't talk about adding people who had not opted in specifically? I mean, maybe there's people who didn't know about it, I don't know.
Well, we'll put it, we can put it on a, a future agenda, and the next council meeting to talk about it with the council. I agree with you. We, the city probably dropped the ball there, and should I have the chance to opt out? You know, residents should have been given that chance probably, but we can sure-
If that's the only way of notification for water leaks, that, you know, that's what I'd like to know. So if that system is going to be used for an actual emergency, you know, you're not using it for an emergency for like, you know, whether sirens still go off. You know, if there's a water leak, there's no other communication other than that system? I don't know. And so that's what I, I'm left not knowing if I'm going to have notification or not.
We'll, we'll find out and we'll let you know.
So the next meeting, so it'll be on like, in a month? It'll be on the agenda, or two weeks? Yeah. Two, two weeks?
Two weeks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tammy. Okay, any other citizens here that want to speak tonight? Then we'll move on to council members. Any updates from council members?
Oh yeah, just wait. We're live on Channel 7.
Oh.
And I think evil in Channel 8 and YouTube.
Okay. Oh, great.
Do we have to reset, get a new subscription, or?
Wade works some stuff out, he told me, but it's working.
Okay.
Okay. That's good to know. Thank you for that update. Any updates from city staff? Okay, then tonight's consent agenda is rather lengthy. A lot of meeting notes, our campaign payables, we have the correction here. We have reports from the ambulance, fire department, City Hall, Public Works, Police Department, and library, and the end, year-end financial report. So we just need a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Kufal, seconded by Eker. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. No public hearings tonight. Communication requests and petitions. We have Officer Robert Kniefeld received the DWI All-Star Honorable Mention Award, so congratulations to Officer Kniefeld.
I think we have a presentation for that this evening.
Okay. Do we want to do that now?
Yes.
Okay, well, come on up. RJ?
Where, where would you like him?
Maybe you could just, somebody could explain it first.
Okay. With us tonight is Scott McConkey. Am I saying that right?
Yes.
He's with the Office of Traffic Safety, which is a division of the Minnesota Department of Public Safety. And he's our Southern Minnesota liaison for law enforcement, and he's here tonight to present Officer Kniefeld with a honorable mention. Maybe I'll have you explain exactly, exactly what it is, Scott.
Just first of all, I want to say thanks for allowing me to be here before you today. In the pre, my previous life, I was lieutenant with the State Patrol. Some people at this table are highly aware of that fact. Hello, Councilman Kufal. Got to tell a story. I was still working with the patrol, and I had the munchies, so I stopped at the Corner Sandwich and Bakery. They had a bakery at the time. Started to talk with this young lady behind me and found out it was Scott's sister. Went up and ordered my sandwich, found out it was Scott's mother. So I turned around and there's the table, I call it the wisdom of the counties, some older gentleman. And I started kind of picking on one of the guys in the group, as I do, and turned out it was Scott's dad. So he's well-connected in this area. But I'm here to present this, this recognition, and this is supervisor initiated. Your chief brought Robert forward and explained DWI is a very, has turned into somewhat a complicated task, and it takes work and effort to do it. But, and, and I don't want to get into numbers because every arrest is significant and can save a life. But when a supervisor has recognized that they have somebody that just puts in extra effort, is head and shoulders, and committed to that area, we are giving them a chance to recognize, and that's the case here with, with Officer Kniefeld. Good. Okay, thanks. So I'm here to present that. We did have a limited number that were able to present or be their award at the Twins game. But for me, I know it's a thrill for the officers, but for me, it means more to come out and visit with the folks that work with him and he works for. You have a chief that cares about his people, and he cares about your community greatly. And traffic safety is not just a law enforcement thing. We're one spoke in a wheel. And the wheel is our communities, with a lot of spokes trying to help, and that involves government officials, citizens, and law enforcement working together to create a quality of living here that's protected to keep, prevent the one of our biggest concerns. It's, a lot of people are dying in crashes. And when I used to speak at high school groups, I'd ask the group some tough questions. And then I'd say, how many know somebody that, friend or somebody died in a drive-by shooting? I got some hands once in a while. Drug-related incident, another criminal incident. Without exception, every time I said, how many of you now juniors, high school seniors, know somebody personally died in a crash, it was always at least 50% of the hands went up. So that's why this is so crucial, and it's so crucial we work together, and we have people that are committed to it. But today, we're here to recognize Robert, and going with that athletic theme. I wasn't looking for a shower when I came in. I didn't bring my own towel, but this is a athletic towel, and it just recognizes his efforts as being a part of the DWI All-Star team. So, sir, thank you very much. Any questions or anything you'd like to say?
I just appreciate the award, and I appreciate the support from the city and from the chief. It means a lot, so thank you.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Good to see you, Scott.
Yes, you too.
Take care. We'll see you now.
Thank you. Next, we have River Valley Chapters, just some information. Mulkey Township Pancake and Brat Dinner coming up. The Senior Center Newsletter, Dryden Township Newsletter, Church Grocery Bingo, and Dancing Like the Stars. Moving on to Department and Committee Reports and Action Items. The first one on our agenda is Public Works, so I'll invite Ty to come up.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
The first thing I have on the agenda is furnace replacement for the water plant. We're looking to replace it. It was installed in 91. Currently, it's an 80% efficient furnace. It's broken down every year for the past three years. In the wintertime, we've always had emergency repairs done to it just to keep it going. So we got a quote from BNR Plumbing for a 95% efficient equivalent. For the quote is $5,206. We're just asking the council to approve that. That will be taken out of the, the water budget, line 400, for repairs and maintenance.
If there's no questions, we need a motion to approve 5206 from line item listed in our agenda for, to be in our plumbing to replace the furnace and, from the water plant. Motion by Eker. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Moko. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to 9C2, the removal of two oak trees.
So these oak trees that are listed in here are just off the corner of Lincoln and Melrose. It's kind of in our, our off-trail little path down there by the lake. The particular oak trees that we're worried about are right on the corner. They're next to a house, and the trees are, the two trees are right next to each other, and they're really big, where if they ever, something ever happened and they fell, you know, because they've been dead for quite a while, we'd cause some damage. We've been talking about it for the last couple of years. Last year, didn't have a chance to do it because all the snow, couldn't get in there. And I talked to the right tree guy, and they're kind of slow right now with the, the ground being a little wet, so they can't really get into yards and stuff. So he said it'd be the perfect time to do it if we want. He said it'd take, to cut down both of those trees, it'd take a full day. So I'm just asking the council to approve to remove those trees. It was discussed at the park board. The last couple of years, I think, we talked about that. So that would be taken out of the park budget, line 400, for up to $4,500. That's a full day's work, so.
Motion to approve removing the trees.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Kufal, seconded by Eker. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is the roller skates.
Yeah, so this is just a question for council. We are now storing all those old roller skates. They're actually sitting at the old city shop at the compo site inside. I know they tried to sell a bunch of them or whatever over this last summer, but there's a ton of them sitting there. I don't know what, do you want us to keep them? Do you want us to get rid of them?
How many pairs are there?
Hundred pairs, probably.
I just asked because roller skating is kind of coming back. Could we donate them someplace?
I know there's, well, they, they took the shelving too, so we had to take all the shelvings. That's actually getting thrown away, the old shelving. But there's four big, black, like, leaf bags full. Alls they are, that's just the roller blades. There's four or five bags of those. And then there's probably 80 pair of old roller skates left, I would say. There's a lot of them.
Better if we can just give them away to people that want them. Maybe just say, if you want a pair, I don't know how we'd work that, but.
Yeah, maybe have a giveaway day, and whatever doesn't go, take it to a place like Play It Against Sports or something where they-
Somebody would want them, or somebody would-
Declare them surplus? City, we have to declare them surplus and then give them away?
I mean, you could do that right now.
Right.
It actually probably, might be able to post it in the League of Minnesota Cities. You know, giveaway or for sale or whatever.
Sure, but I think we still should declare them surplus, right? I'll make that motion to declare the roller skate surplus and give them away.
Second.
We have a motion by Moko, seconded by Eker. Any, I'm sorry. Further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
That's all I have, unless anybody's got any questions for me.
Just my train of thought there for a second.
All right, thank you.
Next, we have the Fire Department, and I'll invite the chief and assistant chief up to the podium.
Good evening, council. Figured I'd just stop up and say hi. It's beginning of a new year again. You guys, I've got my annual report in your thing. Any, any questions or concerns about any of that?
No, before you leave though, and everyone else, I mean, the police department, I mean, all the departments, you guys, your annual reports were great. So thanks for compiling those and putting those together for us.
And Steve alluded me today that, that's the way we're going to do it from now on, just a paper report. You guys read it. We'll be more than happy to show up if you guys got any questions for us. And, and we think it's a great thing, instead of tying up all this time, me, me reading something you, you already read. So I'm good with that. Whatever I, and, well, I'll let Andrew here introduce himself.
For those of you that don't know me, I'm Andrew Trout. I live about one mile east of Gaylord, just off of Highway 19, out on a farm site. I currently work for Michael Foods. I've been employed there for about 24 years. I got two kids and a wife. I have 13 years on, in the fire service between New Auburn and now Gaylord, and I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to fire department and continue to grow. Thank you.
Well, thank you for being willing to serve as, to serve as assistant chief. We appreciate that and everything you guys do for us.
Thank you.
So any other questions? I don't think I got any for you guys, so.
No, just to reiterate what the mayor already said. I mean, the reports look really good. People come in, wonder what you guys do. It's, it's a nice, the statistics are there, the numbers are there.
Yeah, and I, I put probably a little more in this here about where monies were spent with the trading dollars and stuff, and what's reimbursable and stuff. And there, too, you guys know that. It, it takes him and I to make sure that stuff all gets done, and that's just part of our job. And you can see how we can get into the thousands of dollars really fast. So whatever, it's just, it's part of the deal, and, and we're more than happy to take care of all that stuff, so. And I'll just say this, thank you for all the support you guys give us, and, I mean, we're going to have a great future here, so it's all good.
Thanks for the time you put in.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we can jump over to new business. First is 11A, the multiple-family housing development proposal, and I'll turn that over to Steve.
Thank you. This evening, Alex DeValle, DeValle Companies, is back with us. You recall Alex was here back in November. He was proposing to apply for a workforce housing grant for a potential project here in Gaylord of a multi-family housing complex. At that particular meeting, he was requesting a parcel off of Third Street for a potential site. And the council directed him or asked him to consider a different location on Lincoln Avenue to see if that would be possibly a fit for his project. And so he has had an opportunity to do that. And this evening, he is going to share some information as far as what he is proposing as far as a housing complex and development project. So with that, I'll turn it over to Alex.
Thanks, Steve. Good evening, mayor, council members. Nice to be here again.
Welcome back.
Thank you so much. Thanks for the opportunity to share what we've been working on. As Steve said, we had come before you last time to show our preliminary thoughts on Third, and then we kind of translated those over to Lincoln and Melrose. So I'll just jump right into the presentation unless anybody had any initial comments or questions. Okay, all right, well, thank you. We've been working hard on this since we saw you last, and are kind of excited to show you. So this is the site plan that basically shows the larger area. So to the south is Main, and then Melrose you have running kind of north to south here. I don't know if the cursor can show, yeah. So there's Melrose and Lincoln, so it's essentially on the northeast corner, indicated in red. So what we're proposing is a 16-unit building with a small community space here for the residents to use, and potentially also for, if they want to host, you know, an event or something like that, that would require more space than their own apartment, like a dinner or something like that. That's what that circular building would be for. So kind of zooming in here, you have the trail that borders Lincoln here. And what we're showing is a connection, a sidewalk connection that brings you pedestrian and bike to be able to move that way. The primary entry would be coming off of Melrose, and so you would drive in here. There's some surface spaces here that could either be used by visitors or residents. Under this kind of canopy is an ADA space, so that you're protected from the elements. And then the entry into the building is here, and then there's kind of a service area for recycling and waste services. Shown here is a stormwater pond, essentially, that would handle those, you know, any runoffs from the building or the, the site. And then we're showing plantings bordering the, the parking area, and also new trees along Melrose, and, you know, potentially some additional trees along Lincoln. Zooming into the plan, essentially, this space shown in orange is that community room I was talking about before. So to give you a sense of the scale, this oval shape here is a table that seats 16 people. So the concept here is essentially everybody kind of has a seat at the table who would be a resident if they all chose to gather together. Or, as I mentioned, if there was some other kind of event that somebody wanted to, to do, they could do it in this space. There's a seating with a TV and a small kitchenette, and then there's a door that opens out onto the lawn. And I've got some renderings that show this stuff later, but just to kind of orient you in the plan. This is that ADA space that I mentioned, shown here, so you can enter into the building. The zone in yellow is the elevator lobby and the, and kind of a corridor that connects the community building to the, to the apartment building proper. And then in gray are covered parking spaces. So if you recall what we had before in our previous plan, it was a little more surface parking lot and detached garages, a little like another project here in town. And what we came back with was the idea of kind of locating that at street level, but under the apartment, so that you don't have to go outside.
What was the old, the old, this is a smaller footprint, you know, everything- What was the old, the old, this is a smaller footprint, you know, everything's condensed and preserving more green space. It's calling out, you're down to point seven seven acres?
Yes.
City land is what it's calling for here, what was the old, or the other lot was over acre?
I think it was two.
Yeah, almost two, like one point, two acres.
About two and a half.
Yeah, so this is, I like this.
Yeah, we've been trying to tighten it up and be more efficient with it. So, and also address some of the, you know, climate type things where just minimize folks having to go from their car, you know, outside and stuff like that. The elevator, so we're proposing an elevator here and the primary stair and, you know, kind of like a service room and space like that. Moving up a floor, the community room is a double height space, kind of like this, so that it's got a tall ceiling. And so it's shown, it's indicated open to below here. So you, there's no mezzanine or anything like that at this level. And then in the primary building, the area in brown are decks. And then the areas that are colored are the apartment units themselves. So just kind of working from smallest to largest. The, the pink colored units are studio apartments. And so each one would have a, like a bedroom and a small kitchenette and its own bathroom. So everything is kind of contained in there, but it's, it's a modest size in order to keep the rental cost lower. And then the folks who are living in here again can go back and utilize that community room if they want to kind of spread out a little bit. So we took what would normally be a bigger studio and made that additional space available as a, you know, within the community space. The one bedroom apartments are indicated in green, so this is kind of a traditional one bedroom. And then the blue place on the plan is a two or a three bedroom. So this would be somewhere around fourteen hundred square feet, so it could be quite generous in terms of the amount of space you have. So we're trying to offer a range of options to folks, because what we heard in our, some conversations is some people are coming in, they might not need a lot of space. They might be just kind of getting their feet on the ground and then wanting to see what's next. And, and so there would be a, kind of those studio units for that. And then there could even be folks who are families, they have children, and, and then everything in between. So right now, we have the range of unit mixes available. But this can be something that we evolve over time to, to determine what the right mixture is going to be. But the overall size of the building, I think we're feeling pretty certain we would like to see it have this footprint. So moving up one more level, you've got essentially the same plan on the third floor within the apartment building structure. And then the circular building, the community room on the third floor has another smaller space. That's, you know, maybe a private, almost a, a place that a person could go and be, be in a quiet kind of environment and have a chance to unwind or, or, or think or, you know, do something like that. So that's the basic diagram of the building. And then the allocation of the units are indicated in this table. So we have eight studio apartments. And each one has essentially a one bed per, per unit. Six one bedrooms, again, six beds. Two, two or three bedroom units, so that's four or six, sorry. Beds, so for a total of sixteen units, eighteen to twenty people, basically, you know, in, in some form or fashion. And then in terms of the rent we're looking at, as was mentioned in the last, in the last meeting, we're looking, this is within the workforce housing program that we're applying to with the state for the matching funds. And one of their parameters is to do an eighty to one hundred and twenty percent of AMI rental structure. So we're working within that, which basically means it's, you know, kind of right at the middle of the road of, of, of the average median income. So this is the, essentially a bird's eye view of the building from Melrose. So this is that community building we're talking about and this is the primary apartment structure. So you've got a nice lawn here where you could, you know, have a picnic or a gathering of folks here that are using this space. You're entering from Melrose in here with your car or on foot or bike or whatever you choose. This is the connection that goes to the trail on Lincoln that goes kind of into town, so to speak. And then we're showing some new trees and some other landscape. So we'll evolve that more, I know this is a little rudimentary right now, but we'll ev- evolve that further. So this is the view from Lincoln. And what you're seeing here is that, that bike pedestrian connection. Again, on the right side of the image is the stormwater pond that we're proposing. The decks on the, on the right are kind of larger. In fact, if you look at the square footage of the decks, they're covering the parking area. So it's kind of, it's not like a fully built out and enclosed parking structure. So that's what makes it more cost effective. But we want it to look nice and we want to utilize that space for the residents so that they can almost double the square footage available in their apartment, especially in those smaller units, you've got like indoor/outdoor space. This is a view of the, of the entry from Lincoln, from the trail connection with the community room on the left, the main door to the community room that goes out onto the lawn for the inside/outside connection. And then the entryway into the building itself is right where these two people are headed. So this would be your main door coming on foot from the trail. And then on the backside of that is the, is another set of doors that come in. And this is your kind of ADA accessible covered space so that people who are, you know, might have mobility issues can be protected from the rain or the snow and get into, into the building in a more protected way. Yeah, emergency services. And other, other, you know, scenarios where you want to be in a, in a situation that's a little more protected. And then this is a view of the community space, there's that table, that sixteen person table I was referring to before. The seating area and a TV, and then the door that goes out onto the lawn. The same space just from the kind of opposite view, essentially looking back toward the table. This is the, the corridor that connects you into the apartment building. And this is the, the window that looks onto essentially the surface parking. This would be a view kind of from town looking toward, you know, toward the project with Lincoln on your left and Melrose beyond the building. There's an existing structure here, otherwise essentially the, the, the field beyond is, is kind of indicated in the background. This is the parking entry space coming from Melrose with the potential to make a future connection further into the site. So if there were a phase two, we could kind of extend that road with a right of way and utilities and such to just continue coming to the west, if that makes sense. This is the final image, which is again from the trail on Lincoln with the pond to the right, the decks and the, and the parking structure kind of shown in a wood with the natural wood pattern. And then the, the units above in white. So that's the last image I have, I hope that wasn't too long. But we're, like I said, excited and I'm, I'm eager to hear your thoughts on this and, and happy to answer any questions.
I'll go first if you don't mind, man.
Go ahead.
I thought it was outstanding, Alex. I mean, you had above average proposal last time, I thought, I mean, on paper, the concept, but you came back, I mean, you know, I think we improved the location, you know, you, you took our considerations into account and you came back. You went from almost two acres down to three quarters acre site and you came back with, I mean, it's outstanding, you know. So I'm impressed.
It looks modern, it looks clean, it's an efficient use of space, so it looks great.
On top of the community area, is that like open space up there that people get, like a deck area up there?
That's exactly right.
I like the design.
Yeah, that's, it's definitely new to my eyes, I've never seen something like it, so very neat.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that very much. I, I look to you for kind of the next steps, we're, we're ready to continue working on this and look forward to your further thoughts. And I, I'm not sure, I don't really have any questions at this point. I think Steve's been very clear about, you know, pending, you know, this conversation and your decision, what a potential roadmap here would be. So we're, we're ready to go and thank you very much for, for, for your feedback, we appreciate it very much and for the opportunity.
Are we looking to have an agreement of some sort? Come back to the council or proposal, is it an agreement?
Yes, I, Mark and I talked a little bit about having a pre-development agreement, I believe we've talked about. I haven't had a chance to talk to Alex about that, but I think that might be something that we'd want to consider.
What kind of timeline can the council expect, like in the next thirty days?
Yeah, definitely. We, we are, you know, we're working on this, this moves ahead, we'd be looking at that workforce housing program grant and that deadline is April thirtieth, and so we will have to keep moving on this in order to get that in. So we'll have more information about that on the next item here.
What's the whole project timeline as far as what you're looking at, Alex, as far as getting going and having it up and running?
I would say eighteen months.
So we could probably, in the next two council meetings, probably look for something to come back to the council?
Yes. As you recall, you know, based on the grant, you know, we are, there is a, it's a match grant, two to one. And so part of the proposal here that Alex is asking is that part of the match would be including the city's land that would go with that. So we, he's talked about about point seven seven acres here. We would like, you know, from a staff standpoint, the only question that we have is maybe that, that storm pond, if that is sized adequately for the support, the facility, the building, the parking lot area, et cetera. So that would be something we'd want to have an engineer, hydraulist study, look at.
Yeah, we'd be happy to work with you on that and make sure we get that right.
I'm just, I'm bringing that to your attention because that may impact the size of the parcel that they would need slightly.
So the workforce housing development program grant, a two to one match, two to one.
Am I saying that correctly?
Yes.
Who gets the two?
The way, the way it essentially works, and I think Jen is going to speak to this, this might be a good segue. I, I can take a quick stab at it, but I think Jen would be able to.
Sir.
Would that be okay?
Yeah. Good evening, hi, Jen Thieneman, I'm the Director of Real Estate in Community Development for Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership. We're a nonprofit community development corporation. We've been talking with Steve about a number of projects over the years and Mr. DeVal as well. So the workforce housing grant is a city applied for grant to Minnesota Housing State. And so it does require a match, so it's two, two to one. So whatever the local contribution is, you can request up to twice that from Minnesota Housing to go towards the development costs of the project. It is a very competitive grant. And so if you don't have to ask for that exact, you know, doubling of the contribution, it actually can help you to score higher and, and be more competitive in a process. There's thirty-nine million dollars that is in this pot of funding. It was at one point going to be split into two rounds and they have just announced it finally last week. We've been anticipating it for about five months now and it's all going to be in this one round. So if this project doesn't move forward and is applied for, then you'd be looking at fall of two thousand twenty-five for the next opportunity.
This past fall, Alex, when you were here last time, you, you shared, shared a little bit as far as the project costs and what we would, you'd be looking at applying for. Could you update that or refresh us with that information?
Sure. The overall budget, we would estimate to be about four million dollars. And so we are in the process now of determining what the local sources of funds would be. Our target is about five hundred thousand dollars. So we understand that there may be some interest from local, local people who would be interested in participating in this project. So we would not be looking to the city for that, for the bulk of that. The land contribution at whatever the market, fair market value of the, that piece of the land of the site is would be figured into part of the calculation. And then if we are successful, that five hundred thousand dollars gets multiplied to a million dollars from the state. So that would get us one point five million dollars roughly of project cost coverage. And then we would be looking to a local bank or, or a regional bank or another funding source to do the construction loan. There are a few options that we're exploring right now. But this would be, you know, fairly, we're, we're trying to keep it as standard of a process as we can. And the state kind of has its methodology for structuring this and they will be vetting all these proposals, as Jen said. So they're going to go through and look at what the financial assumptions are, what the commitments are and what the economic structuring of this deal is before they determine to make the allocation of the grant as part of their due diligence process. So we're working really within the parameters of, of how they have structured the program in order to ensure that we kind of work with, within their criteria.
So you basically have to have all the funding accounted for where everything's coming from at the time this grant application was.
That's correct, and so it's part of the next sixty to nine, you know, sixty day, ninety day process right now will be to further refine the budget, make it more clear and determine and have a reasonably high degree of certainty that those funds are going to be able to, you know, be in the project.
So tonight, we need a motion to accept DeVal Companies' multifamily housing development proposal to approve applying for the workforce housing development grant through the Minnesota Finance, Housing Finance Agency and to contribute city land as part of the grant match.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion by Moco, seconded by Iker, any further discussion? Then on favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Yep. The second part of this is through Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership. We need a motion to accept their housing proposal to complete the workforce housing grant application and authorize the mayor and city administrator to enter a contract for professional services with Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership.
So there's a proposal in your packet, they're proposing to prepare to grant the application, not to. They're proposing to prepare the grant application, not to exceed, up to five thousand dollars, not to exceed that, plus some reimbursables for travel and mileage as needed. And then the second part of this is that we would be looking to apply to the League of Minnesota Cities under a grant assistance program that assists with hiring consultants for this type of thing. There's a grant up to five thousand dollars available there that we can just do online. The nice thing about the League's grant, it's open-ended, you can apply anytime throughout the year, there is no window, you can just simply go ahead and apply and then they review them and award throughout the year. So we could go ahead and proceed with that right away if this is approved.
Very good. I'll make the motion to accept the Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership's proposal.
Second.
Motion by Moco, seconded by Kufal. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now we need a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-four-eight, a resolution authorizing application for grant navigation support for the city of Gaylord.
So that's the League's resolution that would include in our grant application?
So, or, motion by, made by Eker, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kufal. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll just make the comment real quick, oh, go ahead.
Nope.
I just wanted to say that Sarah is here and she is welcome to be with us today, so according to my...
Oh, sure, from the ambulance, okay.
I was just going to make a quick comment on that, Alex's proposal, and this is pretty exciting, a four-million-dollar project, a lot of bang for Gaylord's buck here. I don't know if I've ever seen a four-million-dollar project and the city has been asked so little of, I guess, so, very, very exciting.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, we'll be in touch.
Thank you.
I'll be in touch.
Thanks.
So we'll just slightly deviate from our agenda and go back to ninety, the ambulance department, because Sarah's here to talk with us and we skipped right over her.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and thanks for getting me in, I know it's going to end up being a little late for you. I just wanted to touch base on our annual report, obviously, I'm sure you guys already saw it anyways, but take any questions if you might have, and just touch base on the one thing that really does stand out is the fact that since I've been here, we've pretty much had two-hundred-and-sixty calls every single year. It's been a monumental year. Our numbers are up to like four-hundred-and-forty-two, so sixty-six percent increase. As you can see on their breakdown is three, two-hundred-and-thirty-five ALS calls and two-hundred-and-seven BLS calls. It's a little confusing when you add those numbers up because then it says there was four-hundred-and-thirty-one calls. The reason is, one call might have five patients, right? So that's patients versus actual nine-one calls. And then in the spring, we will sit down with finance and pull numbers and see what the data says and kind of get a quarterly overcap and then we'll think about the next contract probably in like April, June, or April, May for June and then sign in July.
The contracts go through the end of July.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to let you know, that big EMT class and push that we started back in September finally finished, ten people actually were in that class, one of them from Gaylord and just found out yesterday that he passed his test, so he was offered a job and his tentative start date is February twenty-ninth. And we also had another application within the last week named Sam Krail, who just was offered a job as well. So January started out with a big bang here, having two for sure. Did end up, end of December, early January, having a resignation from Don Burgess though as well, so kind of one-out, two-in.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, moving forward. I'll take any questions if you guys have it though at this point.
Thanks for everything you do.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Okay, we'll go back, get on track with our agenda, eleven C, we have E S S T leave hours for firefighter staff.
Should I start off?
Sure.
Okay. This is an item that's coming from the Personnel Committee, it's a recommendation to the Council. It was actually a request from city staff who actually serve on the fire department. As you know, effective January first of this year, the new earned sick and safe time took effect in all public and private sector businesses, local governments are all required to provide earned sick and safe time now leave, which is basically a new sick leave under, under the state requirements. So basically, we have established it, you approved this last fall as far as amending our personnel policy, so we've implemented all this already for our regular city employees. It came to the Personnel Committee as a recommendation for additional E S S T leave for the firefighters or the staff members who are actually firefighters. And so basically, it would be just for their time that they, they'd only be able to utilize what hours they would earn for the fire department for sick time with the fire department then. So whatever they earn in the fire department would be utilized for the fire department. So everything that, this would be two separate sick leaves, if you will. So they would have their regular city hours, their regular jobs, and then they would have their volunteer firefighter leave hours that they would earn. They would earn them the same formula, one hour for every thirty hours worked, up to four, forty-eight hours of a year, maximum accrual of eighty hours. So same things that we have currently in place for everybody else. So basically, the idea, and Don here can, I guess, provide some input too, but the committee heard that the idea was that the hours would only be utilized in the department, that was kind of a big thing. And part of the thought process was, you know, other firefighters, wherever they work, they're earning E S S T time there and then they're also earning it in the fire department, whereas we would only be, you know, currently city employees that are firefighters are only earning it with their primary job with the city, they're not earning it currently with the fire department. So that was some of the thought process that went into this recommendation.
Yeah, and I could just add to that, and Chief is still here, if we have questions, he did a much better job explaining it than I probably will, but kind of our measure for, because we do have so many city staff that also serve on the fire department, which is a good thing, is, you know, if they worked another job, would they have to use personal time to go to the chief's conference? I can use that as an example and the answer is like, yeah, so, you know, the chief's required to use PTO to go, go to the chief's conference. And the same measure was applied here from the Personnel Committee's standpoint, is if they worked another job, they'd be earning that time, plus they'd be earning their firefighter time, so they'd almost be penalized if we didn't offer that. And Justin gave a really good, gave some concrete examples about how, if it's an optional thing, task they can do, it can be done when they feel better. You know, it would, there would be only certain circumstances, and correct me if I say anything wrong, but, and essentially, the officers are the only one that's going to apply to, the rest of the staff will earn it, but it, it'll be much smaller increments and, and there'll be less opportunities, I guess, to kind of use it.
The officers, they, they still earn it, they just are not able to utilize it for their officer duties.
Right, yeah.
Because they're already being salaried for that.
Well, and I, I was a little concerned about it, you know, huge future liability when you look at maybe a payout after ten years, but, you know, it's a max of eighty hours, it's a little, it's actually just a small carrot for longevity. I mean, you got ten years in and you cut ties and good standing, you pay out fifty percent, I don't have a problem with that.
Is it going to be, how does it work, like, middle of the day, one o'clock in the afternoon, we have a fire call and we're there till three-thirty? So now that time, they're, they would be getting this time, but are they also collecting it from the city side as hours, so they'd be double?
I, I would propose that we would continue to do it like we are right now. So like, if a call comes in during, when they're on their regular city time, they are actually being compensated at their normal city wage, and then once their core hours are over for the day, then they're on fire department time.
On fire, right.
And that's what, how they're being compensated. So I would suggest that they would be earning the leave the same way.
Okay.
I think it makes it a little simpler for us to, to track.
Ultimately, one of the things was just to make sure that everybody earns it the same down there, whether it's where we work at, that was one of the goals. And there too, I guess, we never, that was a good question, Scott, we never really got into that a lot, that's a good question.
I'm sorry. Like I was saying, good question, Scott, about that, we never did discuss that night at the meeting, and like Steve said, we do collect our hourly wage during a fire call from the city. I, I guess, I think if I understood it right, we'd also earn the E S S T time during that time also, right?
Well, you're earning it as a city employee.
Correct.
So it's, his question was, what happens in the event, you know, how's that work? So after, say it goes past your normal core hours, then you would be on fire department time.
Correct.
You're still earning it, but now it's switching over to fire.
Right.
That you're earning it.
Right, right.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, if we got, we got paged out at one o'clock, and let's say the fire went till six o'clock and you guys worked till four, the first hours would be off, a city time, and then the last two hours from four to six would be earned through the fire department.
Yeah.
So there won't be an overlap from...
Right.
Right. And, yeah, there too, the hours earned down there would stay down there. We could not bring them back to the city hall at our normal job, you know, they'd be a hundred percent, no different than you and Scott.
Right, like you said, nobody different than any of the rest of us.
And then it's me being salaried as a chief, I mean, my hours, I can go down to the fire hall on a Saturday, do my job in, or Sunday, so we don't consider that, because that's flexible. The only things that would be considered into this as being used is anything that is carved in stone. You miss a meeting because you're sick or items of that nature, there's, there's where it could be used, so.
Yeah, and we would have to address that all in some kind of written policy because it can and will probably get confusing, so.
Well, it's a good, you know, this came up and it's a good time to just, let's, let's get something in writing because obviously, you know, we got to move forward in the future with this and, you know, what happens if you don't, problems arise. So and we got three of us now that work for the city that are also on the fire department, so it's, it's a, it was a good conversation we had that night, so.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve amendment, personnel policy provided E S S T time. Leave for the city staff who serve on Gaylord Fire Department with the discussed criteria.
Second. A motion by Moco, seconded by Eker. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next on our agenda is the Oaks Lakeside Pavilion draft rental policy, eleven D.
Okay, so in your packet, I put together a draft here. This draft was based on sample agreements that we got from some other cities that have similar facilities that they rent out. Specifically, a lot of this language or this policy comes from Glencoe and Norwood Young America. Also had one from Arlington and Shakopee as well, that I looked at too. But basically, and I'm, I'm not going to go through this obviously verbatim, but I just want to touch on some things here, hopefully you all had a chance to review it. The reservation procedures, person had to be twenty-one years of age to reserve the pavilion. We would allow for temporary reservations, that happens, people are not sure if they're going to be locking in that date specifically. We'll hold it, but we don't want to hold it forever because we might have other parties that might be interested in the same time period or the same date. So we put in here two weeks that we would hold that reservation. And then the reservation would be considered final when they, and booked when they paid the rental fee and the damage deposit. After each event, our city staff will conduct an inspection, this is for damage deposit reasons, we'll make sure that the facility is in the same condition it was when they, when they rented it before their event. Being it's a public building, I'm moving on quickly here to general policies on page sixty, one sixty-one. The pavilion is a smoke-free public building, obviously. We, as you know, we don't allow cannabis products in our city parks, so this is a park-related facility, it's located in our city park, so that, that will not be allowed there. Any, all the, if they have a band, they must stop playing by midnight, if they have alcohol being served there, that would too cease at midnight, and then they would have to exit the premises, everybody, by one o'clock. Hours of use, some, you know, this is just a draft, so this is all subject for discussion and tweaking, of course. So you can rent the facility Monday through Sunday, so again, this is a three-season facility, so winter months are out, obviously, and, you know, I think the three, the seasons are going to be determined by the weather, so how soon somebody could rent it in the, in the spring or how late in the fall depends on the weather. And maybe that's something we want to talk about or that maybe we just need to go through a season or two and see how well it works, but that, that certainly can be, you know, something I guess we can consider. I put in here rental, as far as when they can go into the building, starting at nine AM, the date that they rented for, and again, ends at one AM, that they'd have to exit the building by. Decorations, this can be somewhat of a big area, especially if you're talking like a wedding event type. Oftentimes, and given the building, the nature of the building and how it looks, decorations may be desired, and so that's just something we have to be aware of, and I think that's an item to discuss a little bit as far as what we want to allow and what we don't want to allow. Obviously, we don't want to upset the character of the building, we don't want to create any, you know, damage or just things of that nature, I guess, to the building, so. The next item, I'm on page one sixty-two now, alcohol, and this is just, again, just some thoughts here, as far as how we would handle alcohol for events, obviously, there's going to be some events that alcohol is going to be desired to be served. I put in here for events that have fifty or fewer people attending and are non-weddings, that there would, and they're not planning for any monetary transactions, so nobody's buying anything, that we would allow them to just go ahead and hold the event, but they would have to provide proof to the city of a special event liquor liability insurance. The key is, we don't want to take on that liability for their event, so it's not uncommon for them, for a city or an owner of a rental facility to require, when there's going to be alcohol to be served, that they would have to provide insurance for that. The next one here is for events that are fifty, fifty people or more attending, and it is a wedding event. Proposed here is that we would work with our local establishments, that they would be an on-sale intoxicating liquor license holder for the event, meaning that anybody renting it that wants to have that event and they would have to utilize whoever our designated establishment is, that they would have to buy the liquor through them, and then the establishment also would then provide the staffing at the event. Again, it, and it would fall under that establishment's liquor liability, they would have to extend it to the facility, I think there would be some approval that would be required of the city council, but it would allow them to go ahead and do that then. I have spoken with a couple in town here, EJs and Nisans, and they're both are interested. I had some really nice conversations with them and they even went as far as to say, maybe a way of doing it would be just to alternate from year to year, something like that. They seemed both open to that idea. So they're, they're interested in learning more, of course, this was just a first conversation, so we're just kind of touching on the basics, but they're, they're interested. And I, I haven't reached out to the Legion yet, but I, I was going to do that too. Cleanup, page one sixty-three, there would be some requirements for the parties who are renting to do some cleanup, removing garbage, for example, washing down tables and chairs, cleaning up any spills that might occur, things like that, turning off all the lights, locking the doors, making sure everything is, is buttoned up after the event is over. And of course, removing any of their items, their personal items, we don't want them to leave anything behind. And I put a note in here that they shouldn't be removing any items that belong to the city either. We don't want, you know, what is our property, we want left there. They would have to, when they wipe down tables and chairs, and they would be responsible for putting them back away as well. So the setup would also be their responsibility, we're not going to go in there and set up tables and chairs for anybody, they would, you know, it's their event, they set it up however they want to. If they fail to clean, that would could be, that would be, result in losing their damage deposit, so we want to make sure that they do what they're supposed to do. On page one sixty-four, put some rates and some information here for you to consider. Broke down the rental fee based on whether they're a Gaylord resident or a non-resident, so if it's a Gaylord resident, and I don't know if this is important or not, but I'm just putting it out there for your consideration. So if it's a Gaylord resident, and I don't know if this is important or not, but I'm just putting it out there for your consideration. So a Gaylord resident would be, the rental fee would be six hundred dollars, a non-rental, non-resident would be nine hundred. And if they happen to wanna get in there a day before or after, so if they wanted to do some decorating maybe the day before, or they want to take it, clean it up the next day, there would be an additional two hundred and fifty dollar per day charge. And then lastly, the damage deposit at four hundred dollars. Some, some of the places that I was getting this information from, as far as care, you know, trying to compare up, you know, Arlington's a tough comparison, because they have multiple rooms. Glencoe is somewhat too. Norwood, on the other hand, has a pavilion facility, it's, it's a year-round facility, and these rates are comparable to what they charge. And they have bathrooms, and they have a full kitchen, it's a commercial kitchen, so it's a little bit different, it's a little bit more, about similar size, they just have a couple more amenities. And then they have a full-size bar in place, so, there's a coat room as well, so. And then I just put down some amenities, this is mostly information for the people that would be renting the facility. I'll make a note on the second bullet there, the seating capacity, I put down two hundred and fifty persons, it's actually larger than that. I put down two hundred and fifty because I was thinking about the tables and chairs, that could get pretty expensive, we get more than that. It's already gonna be expensive, I thought, you know, just starting at two fifty, at least starting out at that, for right now.
What's the actual capacity?
It's a little over three hundred, sorry, I don't have that number off the top of my head, but it was, it's a little over, it's based on the square footage of the building.
Do we wanna do that non-resident thing, though? I mean, if there's, say, wanna do a class reunion and nobody lives in town type, you know, we're just, I don't know, a lot of details like that.
I'm just putting it out there, so.
Yeah, I see where you're coming from. That's something to think about, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, 'cause does anybody else charge any different? Because if you're not, like, all these other places that you checked with, do any?
Norwood was the only one that did that.
See, I don't know if I like that either, why penalize them, 'cause they're out of town, if they wanna come here and enjoy, and.
I'd say scrap that, other, other, the rest of this, I mean, you could make endless adjustments, year after year to this stuff, I don't.
One, one other question I have on the alcohol, and I know that's a touchy subject there with that. How are you gonna, so let's say, class reunion, for example, somebody has a class reunion there, or a family reunion, and you get seventy-five people there, and they all just bring their own cooler of beer and whatever. Can they do that, or do they have to have that insurance? If nobody's, you know, like a graduation, they get where the families may be providing for everybody, but if I take a family reunion where everybody's bringing their own beverages to drink?
That's where we ask, we'll, we'll ask the applicant, we'll ask them if they're gonna have alcohol at the event. If they are, then we're gonna require the insurance.
But if they say no, and people bring their own, is that different, is that okay, is that permissible?
Well, that's, that's, they're not following, then, our policy here, and that would be grounds for shutting down their event right then and there. I mean, we, we will have our police checking, you know, I, granted, I don't wanna have an officer walking in on everybody's event. But, I guess when I've done that before, I've had some experience with this, we didn't have issues like that, usually people were pretty upfront about if they're gonna have alcohol. It wasn't such a big deal to have the insurance. The biggest deal came about getting it to us before the event started, because they didn't wanna take it out any sooner, it seemed like. Sometimes we had to chase after people to get them, like, get that, 'cause.
Your personal insurance carrier?
Yeah, you just go to your, yeah, you go to your agent. But, that was one of the challenges that I experienced, was, you know, if we have a weekend event, we're giving out the key on a Friday, and we, comes four o'clock in the afternoon, and we still don't have their insurance, well, we can't give them a key.
Just across the street now, a hundred and fifty feet away, I, I, there had to have been a family reunion at that park shelter, city-owned park shelter, that had more than fifty people at it in the, in the past thirty years.
Well, absolutely, and, and there's people who've had.
What's the difference?
I, I guess, I'm looking at it too, that if I come in here to rent that, and I'm told, well, are you gonna have alcohol there? Yeah, people might bring it, like on a family reunion, and I'm told I gotta go and get insurance, I'm probably gonna be like, I'm not jumping through them hoops, I'll find somewhere else, I mean.
The challenge isn't for us, if there is alcohol there, they don't carry any liability insurance, that means we're covering that event.
Right, and I, and I get that, but I, I just think too, in the same token, we're gonna, it's gonna make it harder to, to rent out. I think people are gonna be less, so I, I don't know what the answer is, but I'm just.
What's with the fifty people?
I, that's arbitrary, I mean, you can, you can adjust that however you want.
You know, if it'd be seventy-five, I would say.
Mark, you got some thoughts.
Well, I was just gonna say that either way, there needs to be dramb shop liability coverage. And so, that fifty person is basically qualifying the renters to allow this special event liability insurance. If it's above that, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but then you're talking about utilizing the local establishment's liability insurance, correct?
Yes.
So, whether we set it at seventy-five, or we set it at fifty, or we set it at twenty-five, that, I think the thing to keep in mind is that we need somebody else's insurance on this, so that, again, it's not the city having to stomach all this exposure, because dramb shop liability is a very real thing. And yes, it's kind of a pain, especially for smaller gatherings, but if we're not requiring somebody else to have the coverage, then it's just the city's.
What kind of fancy, what term was that again?
Dramb shop.
Okay.
That's just another way of saying liquor liability exposure.
Trying to keep up with your lawyer, he's trying to impress everybody.
Do we have any idea what that even costs? Like, if I were to go to my local agency, I need to get this insurance for whatever Saturday, do we know what it, I don't know what it runs? I, I'd just be curious in that too, what, I mean, what's that gonna add to that?
So for, are you kinda leaning towards the city should have that?
I, I think it should be somebody else's coverage, and so.
Regardless of event or size?
Yes, exactly. You know, because it only takes one bad actor, one bad party, and somebody, you know, somebody is serving alcohol in an untold way, whether it's to somebody underage, or over-serving unknowingly, and if we don't have coverage in place, then it, it's the city's problem. And, you know, it can be pretty significant if things go a bad, bad way.
One taken.
I guess we just have to do what, what we've got here, whatever, that they gotta have the insurance, and, and see how it goes, and.
Part of this is, you, I think you all know, and I can appreciate, this is, this first year or two is gonna be a little bit of a learning curve for us all.
Should we have in our policy that they have to get us that insurance a week before the event, or the Monday before the event, so we have a couple days to track it down, rather than getting into that predicament?
We won't give them the key until they, I mean, if they're required to have it, we, we'll be upfront about all this stuff, and they're gonna have to have it. I'm just sharing that sometimes it gets to be a little challenging to chase after people. And then the, you know, the deposit, you know, four hundred dollars, it's hard to know if that's gonna be enough, or, you know, some events can get a little out of hand, as you can appreciate.
And four hundred dollars isn't a lot, you know.
Nowadays.
Not, it would take very little damage to.
Take, to hit, yeah.
To hit four hundred dollars, I think that's reasonable, because if they take good care of it, they're gonna get it back.
It is important that we have security cameras, it's our only proof. If we don't have cameras, then they can argue it to death, so we, we need to have the cameras in there, and outside.
I don't know if four hundred's enough, I mean, I would, I'd at least bump it to five hundred, just.
What, what's a table gonna cost, a table loan, they break a table, I mean, you're.
Yeah, but won't they sign something that if there's more value done, we could actually go after them and get it?
Yeah, we, we do have something that implies that in there.
But it's like anything, if they, we don't have the cash in hand, then we're stuck chasing these people down, and it can sometimes be a challenge. So, you wanna be, to a point, get as much money out of them to secure, for the city to have security, but, you know, you don't wanna be requiring thousands of dollars from these people renting it, because then nobody will rent it.
Good starting point.
Yeah, yep, I, I agree with Scott, or whoever said it, this first couple years, we're gonna learn a lot, and we'll probably tweak this from time to time, but I, I, I agree, it's a great place to start, so.
Would it be like, as far as under them decorations too, there's a lot of stipulations there? Would it be possible to look into putting up some type of hooks that are permanent there? That would be decent, looking at people, 'cause, I mean, it's basically eliminating every possible way of somebody hanging something up down there, what's in there right now. And I think if we had installed hooks that were permanent there, at least then they have somewhere to hook things onto, and they're not damaging the walls.
I, I think that's a good idea, I think at least then we can establish where that's all gonna be, and stuff like that, and what the kind they're going to be. So at least we give them some option there, that they could do something. Because people are gonna want to, I, I look at those rafters, you know, they're gonna wanna drape things through there, I can see that.
But through the rafters, like lights and, you know, tool, they can kinda.
Like if they just wrap lights around, or something, yeah.
Without tape, but, you know, a lot of people now have the, like, the neon signs behind the head tables, so maybe a center stage, put a book, you know, you know. You might have to get some advice from those that are better decorating than I am, as far as where we should put those things.
One of the things I forgot to include in, as far as our list of things to talk about, at the last, last time, I think it was back in our January meeting, talked about cleaning service a little bit, and I think the consensus was that we should look at hiring a cleaning service person.
Yeah, Ty left, I'm sure he doesn't wanna do it.
Yeah, I, I think I can speak for him, yeah.
Yeah, no, we talked about that.
So if, if that's the direction, then we will go ahead and start advertising for that position.
Yeah, and that's important too, because if, you know, someone's charging a few hundred dollars for cleaning after every event, then that's gonna cut into our profits, profits significantly.
So basically have a, the city would have a dedicated LLC, right? That come in and do the cleaning then?
Yeah, we, I'm thinking it would be a city employee, part-time, versus contracting, I need a contractor out there to do that sort, I mean, we can look at both, see if there would be anybody out there that would be willing, and what the cost might be for contracting to do that service, or an alternative as a city employee. The key is, you know, a lot of these cleaning services, in my experience, they, they work Monday through Friday. They don't wanna work weekends, that's their time off, and so, you'd have, try to find, hire somebody then, that would be willing to work on weekends too.
So when you say a city employee, is there someone that's interested in doing it, or you would just, each event, you'd put it out there, and.
Right, we'd have to advertise.
Step up and.
Yeah, we'd have to advertise, see if we could hire somebody. Because I think like these businesses around here who contract, hire people to come in and clean, they're probably during the week. Maybe, I haven't asked around, I don't know for sure.
Does it just have to be a, a city employee, or, or could it be a committee member too? Just, I'm thinking of a larger pool here to cover, let's say that thing gets booked every other weekend. I mean, I, I doubt you're gonna find a, one or two or more city employees that wanna do this on a bi-weekly basis, so.
I don't think he's talking, the people that we have hired, no, I think he's talking about hiring somebody.
Oh, part-time, oh, just specifically for this?
Well, I see what you're saying, I was fine, like, you had, had employees that are gonna step up and say, I'll go down there for.
Yeah.
Lord and Glory, what do you think?
Even, even one part-timer, I don't, I don't.
It might have to be a couple.
It might have to be several.
That's what I've done in the past, is do a couple. If you can get three, great, but.
I would try to shoot for three or four to get on in a pool.
It's just depending on how many you can get, how many applicants are out there, but yeah, I mean, you want, people are gonna do a decent job, obviously, and they're dependable. Because you got, we're renting out this facility, if we have back-to-back events, we want somebody that's gonna be able to get in there and clean it before the next party gets in there. Because that really is a bad situation, if we don't, then we're gonna get one of the guys that come in there, you know, we're all gonna have to pitch in and try to get it cleaned up.
Cleaning supplies and stuff, well, everything will be there.
Yeah, we'll, we'll figure out something like that, yes.
And so if I apply for it and get it, then I can, I don't have to resign?
Resign.
They're not impermeable offices.
Oh.
So, if that sounds okay, I'll, we'll start looking at hiring, start advertising for cleaning positions. Just some other notes here, the park hours right now down there are, I think they're dusk. So, these events will go, some of them will go past that, so it's just something to be aware of. Do you think that we need to amend our code for that?
Possibly, I mean, just to put an exemption for events, really, I think it might have, I haven't looked at what it exactly says, if there's any wiggle room, but if there isn't, it might be worth just adding it in there.
Uh, the purchase of tables and chairs, we want something, obviously, it's gonna be durable. We were thinking of, like, the white plastic ones and the chairs. My experience with cloth covers on the seats is those get stained, and, and you have stains in those forever. It's just more challenging to maintain those, so, the easier we have, the easier to maintain what we have, and something that's durable, because it's gonna get moved around, it's gonna get pushed around. So, we can look into that. We were thinking that we should have some, a couple porta-potties down there, probably the handicap-sized ones, a little bit bigger.
Back to the tables, you looking for formal covers too, or is that gonna be on the?
I think we could make that on them, if they wanna put some sort of covers on them, I think that would be, that's not, not uncommon, in my experience anyway.
Because if the city does it, they'll be ruined after so many years.
I, I see too.
And I know some caterers offer linens as part of their, you know, an add-on to their, they can add on linens.
Mobile bar, we do have the old countertop that was there at the old rower rink, and so our thoughts were to salvage that, and then build a bar that would be mobile, so they could move it around in the, wherever they wanted to. At least that's our whole thought right now, we'll see how that works. But I think our guys could probably just build that.
Thing that we need if they could repurpose the old one, the old counter.
Sound system, not necessarily a system, but maybe we just get a cordless mic, have that available, there's gonna be, you know, if there's any band, they're gonna have all their own sound equipment. But if there's somebody that wants just an event where they need a microphone, maybe that'd be something for us, just invest in and have available, it's a small thing.
I mean, minimal, you know, like a Bluetooth, or speakers that, you know, don't have to be that fancy, but I mean, if, a fam, like a family, or a class reunion, I could hire a DJ or whatever, but maybe they want music in the background, you know, some, it don't have to be expensive speaker system nowadays, you can.
And sometimes like at weddings, you know, they do the best man made of honor speeches before the DJ gets there, so they, they would want something.
I agree.
But it doesn't have to be, I mean, you can get some really small, good speakers systems these days, so.
I already mentioned the security cameras. My que, my next question is, what should we shoot for as far as when we're gonna make the facility available? When should, when can we start taking reservations and other words? Should we wait till May, April, what's, anybody's thoughts here?
May first.
April first.
April first, sure, it's very nice out, how about February eighth? It's warm enough.
Tomorrow.
Taking reservations would be, I mean, somewhat easy, I suppose, taking them, but when are we gonna allow or be ready for rental? Probably not till, what, June first or middle of May?
There's a little bit of work to be done out there, but that should be done in April, I would think.
I would say beginning of May, because people start having graduation parties.
And graduations early this year, I think it's like the seventeenth or something.
Yeah, it's in May, it's in May.
Yeah.
If there's work, when, when you anticipate some touches?
We could use it right now, though.
Okay, yeah.
We're, we could go in there and use it. The only, I did get a call from the school about the possibility of a prom party being there, of having a prom there.
And that would be the first weekend in May.
Okay, that would be.
Have siblings prom there, just to have, or after prom party, or the proms.
No, I think the actual prom.
The actual prom, really?
Cool.
There, it was something that, they're considering it, it was one of their locations, so they were just inquiring on when it would be available.
And we don't have to worry about alcohol there.
No, no, there'll be chaperones too, so.
So would say, make it available starting May first, I mean, it's gonna be weather-dependent on the renters, I guess.
Yeah, and they have to be aware of that.
There's no heater, air conditioning.
Just going back to smoking in the park, I mean, I know people smoke down there at Extravaganza, is the whole park smoke-free or just designated areas?
I thought the whole thing.
I thought the whole thing was smoke-free.
Pardon me, I don't.
Well, it says tobacco-free technically.
Yeah, tobacco-free.
Okay.
Because I know it says no smoking cannabis, but we'd have to include tobacco, I just want cigarette butts flicked all over the place, or if we're gonna allow smoking there, we should have a designated smoking area, but I'd prefer if the park is smoke-free to keep it that way.
Should be smoke-free.
Yep.
So we probably want that in the policies, they know, no smoking cannabis or tobacco.
I'll change that.
Okay.
Did you wanna, as far as the alcohol, do you wanna move that up from fifty to seventy-five? Did you wanna, as far as the alcohol, do you wanna move that up from fifty to seventy-five?
Well, I think either way, no matter how, like you said, no matter how many people is, there needs to be insurance, right, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, then, then they would have to get the insurance through their, their personal insurance agent, but it does probably make, um, smaller gathering a little more accessible, if you're not required, then you go through one of the bars.
Well, and would the bars be interested in the staff time and the setup for a smaller gathering? You know, may, they might prefer that it's seventy-five or a hundred before it.
That's a good point.
Yeah, I was gonna say, well, even seventy-five, depending what the event is, it's not, I, I mean, I don't know. Maybe ask them what their thoughts are.
Yeah, what their minimum number would be.
Okay.
Are we good now with this?
I think so.
Okay, let's go.
So.
I'll bring back.
Do we wanna bring this back, some motion tonight?
I'll, I'll make the changes, bring it back, and.
Perfect. Okay, so then we'll move on. Next is Swenson proper, or no, I'm sorry, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash.
Our first election this year, this is an election year, the first one will be the presidential primary election on March fifth, and then we have our regular primary in August, and then we have the general in November. So, um, we are required to appoint election judges, um, for our elections, and so that's what resolution twenty twenty-four oh nine is.
So we need a motion to approve resolution.
Okay.
Uh, motion made by Eker, seconded by Kufal, any further discussion?
I'll already rate their pay as the same as what we paid last time, too, two years ago.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Moving on to eleven F's, Swenson property lease.
When, last year, when you guys renewed this, um, you did inquire about making it a multi-year agreement. We talked to, um, Mr. Swenson, he would, he would prefer to keep it as a one-year agreement. The same, um, lease amount, no, no, no other changes except for the term.
We need a motion to approve property lease agreement between the city and Greg Swenson.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Kufal, seconded by Eker, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next is the HPC Commission resignations.
Um, the chairperson, Lee, I always have trouble pronouncing that last name, is it Amorim?
Amorim.
Amorim, I apologize. She also has submitted her resignation, I received it over the weekend. So basically, this is everybody.
We need a motion to accept the Heritage Preservation Commission members' resignations.
So move.
Motion by Moko, do we have a second?
Okay.
Seconded by Kufal, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. There's nothing else, we need a motion to adjourn.
Nope, sorry, we do have a closed session this evening, so.
That's right, I'm sorry.
No, ah, adjourn.
I forgot about the closed session.
We just need a recess.
Oh, yeah, so we'll take a short recess, um, move to, as we prepare to close the meeting.
Maybe, if you would mind, could you read that statement on page?
Uh, this portion of the meeting will be closed pursuant to Minnesota Statute, section thirteen D, point oh five, subdivision three B, to discuss attorney-client privileged matters related to ongoing threat and pending litigation. And with that, we will.